Good evening. Since this is the Quarry Valley Realization Meeting, I get to begin, since we do not have a board chair at this point. So I'd like to call the meeting over at 6:00 PM. Would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The first item on our agenda is to nominate a board chair. I would like to open the floor for any nominations.
I'd like to nominate Lisa.
I'd like to nominate Eric.
Okay, so we have a nomination for Lisa.
This will have to be by roll call, because we have people online.
Yes. Yep, and we have a nomination for, sorry, Tom, Eric, okay, thank you. All right, are there any other nominations? Okay, we will do a roll call vote. So when I call your name, please just state whether you, Lisa or Eric. So we'll begin, Tom.
Eric.
Lauren.
Eric.
Rebecca.
Uh, Eric.
Jessica.
Eric.
Eric?
We get to vote?
Yes.
Okay.
Eric. Sarah?
Lisa.
Okay, Lisa?
Lisa.
Mike?
Lisa.
And Linda?
Eric.
Okay, so via a vote of one, two, three, six to three, Eric, you are the board chair. Congratulations. I'm going to turn the meeting over to you. Okay. And pass it down, Eric's have to fill that out.
Okay, the next item of business is to choose a vice chair. And please pipe in if I'm missing anything procedurally.
I'd like to nominate Jessica.
Nomination has been made for Jessica. Need a roll call vote. Anybody else? Nomination has been made for Jessica. So we can go votes by...
You could just all in favor.
All in favor. All in favor.
Aye.
So moved.
Eric, you should definitely ask if anyone's opposed.
Okay, technically. Are there anybody opposed to Jessica becoming vice chair? I would say that before, okay. Okay, then next we need a nomination for clerk. Does anybody have any nominations that they would like to put forward for clerk?
I'll nominate Rebecca.
There you go.
Anybody?
What are the roles and responsibilities of the clerk?
Chris, would you want to elaborate on that?
The clerk typically serves like a secretary recorder. We do have a board secretary who does take minutes, but the clerk, if Shawna would not be able to do it, that is one of the main responsibilities for the clerk.
You'll nominate Sarah.
If I understand the parameters of the responsibilities are substitute note taking, then that is it. Then that is okay.
Okay, there's been a nomination on the floor for Sarah. Does anybody have... Chris, you have to help me out with that.
Any other nominations?
Are there any other nominations?
Move that the vote be closed and one cast, one vote be cast for Sarah.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. All those not in favor? Okay, so moved. We have the remaining members of the board.
And Eric, you just would state, just for record, just, you'd state that publicly and then just write that down, so just...
Have them state their names?
You would just go around and state their names, so...
So Sarah?
Sure. Sarah Lounas-Watulik from Proctor.
So Eric, I'm sorry to clarify, so you've already appointed a chair, a vice chair, a clerk, so then all other individuals would then appear on that line, so Sarah is clerk, Jessica is vice chair, and you then would put Tom, Rebecca, so that's who appear on that line.
That's, so really there's nothing to officially do there?
Right, you would just publicly state their names and just write that down, so...
Okay. I'm going to need everybody's last name. Sarah?
I think we're starting with Tom, because I'm already on the record. It's okay.
Tom?
What am I doing?
Last name.
Last name.
Oh, Callahan, C.A.L.L.A.H.A.N.
Rebecca?
Gardner, G.A.R.D.N.E.R.
M.I.S.E.R.
Okay.
M.I.S.E.R. Linda Smith.
Okay, we got to set the regular meeting schedule.
Do we need to do the folks on Zoom? Sorry, there are meets.
Oops, sorry.
There are no more members on Zoom.
Oh, there's nobody on Zoom, okay.
So we need to set a regular meeting schedule. Does anybody have any...
So I would recommend to the board that we stay with the second Thursday of every month, similar to what we've done in the past. That would align with our particular way we do the SU policies. But that's, obviously it's up to the board's decision, but...
I recommend we do the second Thursday of every month at 6:00.
Nomination on the floor for, recommend motion on the floor for the second Tuesday of every...
Thursday.
Thursday, excuse me, of every month at 6:00 PM for a school board meeting. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
We need to set the set date of annual board retreat.
I think we put that on hold last year too, didn't we?
You can just...
We can put that on hold.
TBD if you would like.
Okay, to be determined. Set date for annual meeting, it looks like it's been filled in, for February 25th, 2025 at 7:00 PM.
Pontley.
Pontley.
Pontley. Affirm the use of Robert's Rules of, I don't want to say of order, but affirm the use of Robert's Rules for small boards.
Make the motion.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Anybody oppose? So moved. Review and accept VSBA codes of ethics. Codes of ethics for Vermont School Board members.
Eric, you don't read it, just, because what we do is just, we would ask board members to sign, just hand them at the end of the meeting, so...
Okay, all right.
It's just a motion that...
Does anybody want to make a motion to sign in the code of ethics for Vermont School Board members at the, by the end of the meeting?
I'll make a motion to use the VSBA code of ethics.
Motion's been made, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
So moved. Identify, identify locations where agendas and meetings will be posted. Does anybody have a motion?
We did what, the Rutland Herald? Did we do that?
No, so this is...
It's the library, the town office.
We'll post it GRCSU CO and on the website.
Central office.
So we just have to name three locations for each town.
Okay.
So library, town office.
And the central office.
And central office.
So that has to be a motion, or is that just settled business? It should be in a...
Yeah, I'll make a motion to, I, to put in the for central office, town, the town offices and the library.
Is there a specific library, or are all libraries in each town?
Well, it's like Pontley Library, Proctor Library, West Rutland Library. Town libraries.
Motion's been made to identify the locations where agendas and minutes will be posted. Our central office, town office, and town libraries for each town, Proctor, Pontley, and West Rutland. Any discussion?
They're putting the post office.
All in favor.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Anyone opposed? So moved. Affirm choice of attorney. Have we used...
My recommendation would be to stay with Chris Leopold for this year.
Make the motion, we do, point Chris Leopold as our board attorney.
Motion's been made to affirm the choice of attorney, Chris Leopold. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Item eight, identify media sources. Does anyone have a motion?
We've used the Small Papers, the one Lakes Region, we've used Rutland Herald. Is there another one? Or is that the two? Make a motion to use the Rutland Herald in Lakes Region for media sources.
Motion's been made to use the Rutland Herald in Lakes Region as media sources for the board. All in favor?
Discussion.
Is there any discussion?
We don't use, you know, like, media sources that are online or anything, right? We're talking just about these two.
Well, I mean, other boards have identified Front Porch Forum if they want to do that, but...
Okay.
But that would be up to the board.
Does anybody want Front Porch Forum?
But there is a higher cost when you do multiple, multiple towns. So that, Chris, we just, because we were asked about that last year. And I know that Wells Springs use Front Porch, it's done through a personal account, it's not done through...
Okay, so you have to have a...
Just something to consider.
Yeah, I belonged to that when I was in Wells. So... All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Item nine, authorize the administration to request and expand available grant funds from the Agency of Education as well as state and federal funds.
I make a motion.
Motion to approve, to accept. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Item 10, authorize board to borrow funds for UUSD pending receipts of payments from State Education Fund. Anybody want to make a motion?
Come to motion.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Item 11, authorize the board chair to sign directors' orders and other documents on behalf of the board as necessary. Does anybody want to make a motion?
So moved.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You did it.
Okay. Item 12, assign GRCSU subcommittee representatives. So GRCSU negotiations team, we need three people from the board. Does anybody want to make a nomination?
These nominations are self-nominations typically.
So it's already a negotiations team in place.
Okay, so just, what do you want to do there?
What I do believe is Linda, Mike, and Lisa, correct, the three? I would say, my recommendation to the board would just be stay consistent with that. Stay on the process, but if the board, if anybody else wants to join, that's a board's discussion.
So, so...
I make a motion to leave the negotiations team with Linda, Mike, and Lisa the same.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Policy committee, two people, do we have two people already in that?
So I'm currently sitting on that policy committee, and then Kristen was. So that second position is now open.
Okay. Does anybody want to make a nomination for the second position of the policy committee?
It's a good way to get your feedback.
So Lauren has been nominated, are there any other nominations? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All opposed, any opposed? Next is building and grounds, we need two nominees, or do we already have those positions filled?
I nominate Tom.
A nomination has been made for Tom for building and grounds. Any other nominations?
I'll nominate Rebecca. I don't hang out with buildings enough.
Nomination has been made for Rebecca. Are there any other nominations? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Next is, we need nomination for two communication committee members.
It's not currently active.
So are we...
These are committees, during the course of the year, if the board would want to form a committee, they could do that at that time, so...
Okay, so the next two are on the back, Chris?
I don't know what the...
Stafford.
Well, we need a regional advisory board representative, and Linda has served, and my recommendation would just be continue with... No one else wants to do it.
Yeah, I'd like to do it if nobody else wants to.
Yeah, did we do the GRCSU reps?
We didn't. No, we did not.
We didn't.
Actually not on the...
It's not on the list.
Okay, so that may be the first thing, there might just be a spot, but we need to nominate representatives to the board, so it's all right. No, just at the very top, it should be when we get into GRCSU committees, so you can just put anywhere.
Okay.
Currently it's Mike, Lisa, and I.
Make the motion, we stay with that. I make the motion, we stay with that.
Okay, I don't see it here, Chris.
Write it in.
Tell me the name of the committee again, please.
It's Lisa, Meiser, Mike Moser, and Linda Smith.
It's just QV, representatives to the GRCSU board.
Right. I mean, anybody can come, it's just they can't, well...
And what was the name of that board?
It's the GRCSU, the Quarry Valley Representatives to the GRCSU board.
Do we want to take a break before we move on to the agenda of the meeting, like further on, or keep on plugging on?
Plugging on.
Okay.
You just need to ask for approval.
Oh.
You're going to go through now and ask for approval. You got the agenda?
I got the agenda. Do I have to read the agenda?
You just ask for approval. You'll get it. You'll get it.
There's a lot of stuff to remember.
Yeah, you'll get it, you'll get it. Take your time.
I'd like to ask for the board's approval of, or I would like to make a motion for the approval of the agenda.
Make the motion.
So there is one...
With the corrections.
Correction, just under the new business C parent request, that should read F-21, not F-51.
F-21.
Make the motion with the adjustments.
Motion has been made to adjust item six, paragraph C, parents' request, instead of F-51, it should be F-21. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Are there any, is there any public persons that would like to, like to speak in front of the board?
Twenty items that's not on the agenda.
General public comments?
Twenty items that's not on the agenda.
It's not on the agenda?
No, it's...
No, it's addition to what you're saying.
Oh.
It's Robert's Rules, just...
Okay. I'm sorry, I will...
No, that's all right.
I will refer to Robert's Rules and get my stuff together.
No, that's all right.
It is, so...
I think Mike was just trying to help you through it.
Yeah. So, so can you explain to me again, I'm sorry?
It's, is there any general public comments that are not on the agenda?
Is there any general public comments that are not on the agenda? No one, no one here has any general comments? Old business. Is there any discussion of old business?
So we, we can't, since the old business, we can't add any old business at this, to the point. That would be additions at the beginning of the meeting, so at this point, we just move into new business.
Okay.
Yeah.
New business. Any discussion on new business?
And you go to Wells Shuttle Bus.
What is the proposal for A on the Wells Shuttle Bus?
So I think Louis is on the call as well. So we had discussed, we brought a situation to this board, it was maybe two meetings ago, around the situation at Pontley High School concerning Wells students, and that's, as the students were being transported to school, in fact, from school, that the bigger issue is on the way home, the students were leaving, I believe Joe 15 minutes early.
15 minutes early, yeah.
And so one, a parent came to the board to ask if there's any adjustment, anything that we could do. The alteration, or the things that we can do is that, you know, in order for those students to stay a full day, we could provide, you know, just a transport home on the Stafford bus, which would come, they would have to stay a little bit after, like 3:00 is the time Joe Stafford bus comes, which would take care of the transportation issue for those students with no cost. The only adjustment would be that the Stafford bus would then just drop them off at Wells. It would not drop them off at home. If we were to continue with their normal routes, there'd be additional cost to this board. So the discussion was what we'd like to do through the remainder of this year, and then also moving forward. Louis, is there anything that I missed on that?
Yeah, covered it. The bus is like 3:05, and we get them to Wells around 3:20.
So it is something which we had looked at, is not something we had budgeted on for next year, transportation. The bigger concern for us would be, this year would be, you know, to students who have become accustomed to being dropped off at home, to families, that's... become accustomed to being dropped off at home, to families, that we have some funds that we could pay for the bus to continue with the service to their doorsteps this year, but the recommendation would then be to let the parents know for next year that it'll be from Polton High School to Wells, but we would not be doing a, that would give them enough time to make, you know, other alternative plans, but for this year, we could maintain service, but next year, we would make an adjustment, but let them know in advance. So I think that was the proposal, just to see if the Board was okay with us, and Louis, anything you want to talk about in terms of the funding?
I mean, for this year, we have the run from Polton High School to Wells budgeted, and that cost wouldn't change.
But if we would, but if we would do the-
The drop off at home, and that would be the additional cost, the additional cost for the full year is about $25,000, so depending on when we start it, that would determine exactly how much it would cost, and we were already more than halfway through the year. I mean, we even potentially use SRT funds for the remainder of this year if we needed to.
And what was it, $5,500 you said?
The total cost is $25,000 for the year. So if you, approximately. So I, depending on when we started exactly, we determine exactly how much it is, so I mean, if we take the $25,000 divided by 180 days, it's about $138 a day. So if there's 50 days left, then it would be 50 times 138, depending on when we start this.
I would make a motion that we take them to their door using the Stafford Bus to Wells for this year and not do it for next year.
Next year would just, we'd still use the Stafford Bus.
Still use the Stafford Bus, but we would go to Wells-
To school. Polton High School to Wells, from school to school.
And this year, we would go to their homes.
To their homes.
Just continuation of the current service at the-
Correct.
So, so a motion has been put forward that the Stafford School Bus would bring Wells kids home to their actual homes and drop them off for a period of, for the rest of the year, and then the following year, they would be dropped off at Wells Elementary School. Any discussion?
Doing door to door for the rest of the year?
Just for the rest of the year. Continuing of the service, yes, just the remainder of the year, and then next year, parents then will have ample notice to make any adjustments they need to make. We currently, for Middletown Springs, it drops the students off at the school, so it'd be both Middletown and Wells, next year would be from school to school.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Obstructions?
Objections.
Objections, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Oh, God.
You'll get it.
I guess I'm gonna be reading tonight. So moved. Okay, parent.
I was just gonna say Louis, we can talk about the next item for you.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Louis.
This is the Green Print contract.
Yep, so a couple of years ago, the law, the state passed a law that any commercial building that had more than three acres of impermeable surface would have to go about a plan to, for a storm runoff, so that it was not damaging the soil and drinking water. So we've been working with Green Print Partners, who is, was picked by the state for these projects, to come up with a plan, Rich Holcomb has mostly been working with them, I've just been on the sort of the contract side, they've come up with a plan, and now they're to this point where we have to go out to bid for construction people to come in and actually put the plan in action. The project is funded, the funding goes directly to Green Print Partners from the state, and then Green Print Partners is the one that would be contracting with us to pay any remaining amount. The state is covering 90% of total cost of the project, and the total cost of the project is estimated at $22,000 for Polton Elementary School, so that leaves our portion at $2,200, that's our estimated total cost. We don't, Green Print handles everything, they're the ones that go out to bid, they manage the construction, and they've been managing the permitting process, so it's really, for us, it's just minimal amount of work, and in this case, I think also a minimum amount of cost to be in compliance. Rich is on the line, he can fill you with any details of the actual project and what they will be doing.
Is there any other schools we have to do this with?
Rutland Town is doing this.
Yeah, there's two, two schools in our supervisory, it's Rutland Town and Polton Elementary School.
West Rutland and Proctor are good? And why do we have to do that?
Because of the space of the parking lot.
They're under the three acres.
They're under three acres?
All the other schools are under three acres.
And Polton, they got that much parking over there?
It's not parking, it's just land.
Between the building, the parking lot.
Oh, 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 okay, okay.
We have eleven plus.
There's tennis courts, basketball courts, yeah.
All those softball fields, Tom.
Yeah.
At the elementary school.
Rich, did you want to talk about the project at all, give a little, just a bit of an overview?
So basically, the project is gonna be in the center circle of the front of the school, so where the cars drop off the kids, the, that grass area where the big rocks and the signs are, they're basically gonna put in like a big dry well, so when it rains, all the water will go into that dry well and slowly dissipate into the ground instead of all at once going across the parking lot or into the ditches or whatever, basically it's a holding tank that eventually will seep into the ground slow. Pretty, pretty simple system.
That won't overflow in a heavy rain?
They, they said it shouldn't. It's been engineered, so. I mean, we're far, far away from the river, but we still have to do it because of the acreage.
So the contract has been reviewed by our attorney as well as the state, so at this point, we just need the Board to approve the contract, and then Chris could sign it, and we can send it back to them so that they can start the bidding process.
And this, this came about, has it been in the process of, or it comes up, what, it's been in the process of doing this?
This is, this was a new law that was passed, I think about three years ago, and it's been in the process since, it's been, they've been working on the engineering and the plan, we've been getting, we've had to get several different permits, so we've been working on this for at least the last two years, I believe.
So you've heard about this before, okay, so I'll make a motion to approve the funding for this project?
Okay, motion's been made to approve Green Print, contract for a three acre storm project at Polton Elementary School.
High, is that elementary? Oh, okay.
Yeah, elementary school. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Objections? So moved.
Thanks, Rich.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rich.
Eric, the next, I could talk about the next item if you'd like.
Go for it.
All right, so the next item is a parent request, we do, Samantha Born, who has a first grader at Polton Elementary School, reached out to Kristen Caligery and myself about a week ago, informed us that their family is relocating to West Rutland, and that while her oldest child will stay at Polton High School, do the school choice, and you know, but really what liked, what she wanted was for her first grade child to remain at Polton Elementary School for the remainder of the year. If we look at F-21, the policy states that the superintendent can approve any requests from spring break to the end of the year, that anything before spring break really has to come before the Board for approval, I don't have the authority to override Board policy, so that's why it's coming before the Board, for your decision. I would support this, I think it's probably, it's best for the child, I know Kristen supports this, I think, you know, Jay supports this as well, but as we said, this is a Board policy, so therefore, the Board can override its own policy, so the request from this parent would be to allow their first grade child to remain at Polton Elementary School for the remainder of this year, and then next year would be enrolling at West Rutland School. So we just need a motion to approve that request.
I'll make a motion to approve the request for the child to stay at Polton Elementary School.
A motion has been made to allow a child to stay at Polton Elementary School to finish the year. And then move to West Rutland, you said, Chris? Is that-
Next year will be attending-
Next year will be attending West Rutland. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, opposed, or objection? So moved. Consent of agenda. A, approval of minutes. Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Motion has been made to approve approval of minutes. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. B, approval of warrants.
I'll make a motion to approve the warrants.
And has made a motion to approval of warrants. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. C, Superintendent's Report.
Thanks, Eric, I will be brief tonight, this is the time of the year where majority of work is focused on budgets, town meeting, I do want to first thank the residents of Polton, Proctor, and West Rutland for voting yes and supporting our schools and our budgets, much appreciated, I know this is a very difficult budget cycle for a lot of districts, I think 30 of 97 school districts we had a budget that did not pass, I do want to, you know, to thank our three communities for their support, and I know that our Board remains committed to being fiscally responsible, and you know, still maintain, you know, high quality education for our students, so I just want to say publicly, thank you to each and every one of you for coming out and voting, and for those that did not support the budget, please reach out to myself, who are admin or a Board member, to also try to share just your concerns, so that we can address that, those concerns as well, that's important feedback for us as well, so, thank you. I will, I do want to congratulate Eric and Jessica on their reelection to the Board, thank you for committing to another three years, you know, appreciate that, and I would also like to welcome Lauren Davenport for joining our Board, so welcome, look forward to working with you as well. One more congratulations, but I'll make it very brief, because I'm not going to steal Jay or Joe's thunder, I do want to congratulate West Rutland Girls Basketball Team on yet another Division IV State Championship, but, sorry, Jay, I don't know. But I just wanted, you know, just briefly congratulate them, and the, the rest of this packet is around the legislative report, it is rather lengthy, there are a lot of items that we are keeping an eye on, as we know, you know, each legislative session is very unique, and we keep a close eye on what it means for our schools, our communities, and our districts in the SU, and there are some things that we are, keep a close eye on, obviously, just, you know, we, you know, look at PCBs, what's going to occur there, we're looking at the, you know, literacy, what that means for us, we're looking at CTEs, particularly as it relates to sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, and what sort of additional programming or resources or staffing we may need to put into place, so like I said, it's, we keep a close eye on these things, I think as we move towards the end of the legislative session, once Bill's our pass, we then will discuss with the Board the impact that these will have on our schools and our budget, it'll be, while we just pass a budget, it's now time to start thinking about our next budget, and how it works, so, I'd be more happy to answer any questions about the, anything legislatively or anything else.
I have a question about 172, which is the Education Bill of Rights for children who are deaf, hard of hearing or blind. Is there any provision for any services, is the state gonna provide funding for, for pares or whatever might be needed concerning?
That, I, I don't know, I am, our Regional Superintendent's Group is meeting with our Representatives of Senators on Monday, so I can ask at that time if there, you know, be additional funding.
It would, I guess it would depend on the condition of the individual, but you could see where you might need one for every child, because if somebody is visually impaired, they're gonna need help pretty much consistently, and if there's two, then they're gonna need two, so it could be expensive.
And Mike, I think that's something which, with each bill, as we look at, there is cost, and I think it's, part of our, you know, as I talk with other superintendents, part of our concerns are that as each cycle, as we see bills getting passed, there are hidden costs, you know, and the impact that that has on budgets, so when we hear, you know, our governor or legislator talk about how Boards or schools are overspending, it's really not the case in a lot of situations, in fact, you know, like I said, our Board, our schools administrators, we are very, we're fiscally conservative, a lot of our, you know, spending really is coming from pieces of legislation like this, where, like as Mike said, you know, what does this mean, does this mean additional pares that we may have to employ, there's cost there, we go back to literacy, where it's important to have literacy, but there's a cost for screeners, and what that means, there's cost for training, we look at CTEs, we look at sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, well, it's important, but there may be some additional costs, so that's something which we do keep a very close eye on, is, you know, the cost, and we have found ourselves with other, you know, pieces of legislation in the past, where we look at, you know, universal pre-K, we look at school meals, there are, there are costs, and, and what that does to the Ed Fund and also how it impacts all the budgets, so, and I think our community has to understand that when we look at budgeting, it's not just, you know, things that occur within our school, there are a lot of other forces at play that really impact a school budget, and so while people can come and, they have every right to question and ask what we're spending our money on, but I think also, you know, you have to, you know, Speaker, Representatives, your Senators as well can question some of the decisions being made and the impacts they'll have on communities, on schools, you know, the impacts they'll have, we've heard about consolidation on a variety of levels, you know, that, that's the reality of the schools that are facing Vermont, partially because of myriad of factors around Ed spending, so, you know, with, as I look at these, right, Mike, there is like, what's the cost, what is this going to mean for us, and, but the devil's in the details sometimes, I think that's just, we're left to sometimes figure this out, you know, so they'll pass it, and then they say, well, figure it out, and then, okay, how are we gonna fund it, which is, I'll be honest, how we got in this situation with PCBs. We got this situation, and now it's like, oh, well, do we have the money to really see this all the way through, which is a concern, so.
Well, I know that, today there was a meeting, because the ESBA talked about it from 10 to 12, where superintendents and Board members and-
The House Way and Means.
Met with the House Way and Means to tell them in a nice way that they really need to start thinking exactly what you said, you can't just come up with things that, and not have the money to back it up, and if all, all the, all the ones that came and crossed over to become, to the Senate or the Senate to the House, pretty much all the bills came without funding, I mean, that's the thing I noticed when I read, when they talked about it last night, it was like, oh, this one is going over, no funding, this one's going over, no funding, so, you know, and they, I asked two months ago, we're now- So, you know, and they, I asked two months ago, we're now, what's the word I want to use? We're now, with that neuron jump, Linda, we have some money coming in, and I asked about, I can't think of the word I'm trying to say, and I apologize, but I asked, why can't we use that money? And they said, oh, we haven't talked about it yet. So, you know, it's like, we do have money coming in, but they don't explain, the legislature doesn't explain why, where it's going, you know? And that's kind of hard to take when you, when you don't have an answer. You want to put in all this good stuff, but you don't have the funding to do it, so. Yeah.
And one last thing, Eric. So I, I will be uploading to the board folder for April, a copy of the facility assessments. We still have not yet received the revised version back from the state, but, you know, don't necessarily want to wait for that, but I think it's going to be important for us to kind of just see what these assessments, as it relates to each of our buildings, because that does play into similar, what Linda was alluding to about school construction and, you know, maintaining our facilities and the cost to maintain our facilities and, you know, whose responsibility is that? I think that's just the discussion that is being had across the state, is, you know, so.
Gambling, that's what I asked about. See, I knew it was going to come. I had to wait for it to jump. But it was gambling money. Now gambling in Vermont. Why can't education have some of the money from the gambling that's, that's coming through? And the answer I got two months ago was, you know, we're not, we don't know what we're going to use the money for. Well, education would be great.
So, is there a motion to accept? Do we, do we go through that?
No.
No, I don't go through that?
These are not-
Okay, just reports.
Right.
All right. So, next on the agenda is principal reports. Jay, would you like to?
Sure, sure. So, again, Chris, I want to congratulate the, the West Rutland Girls varsity basketball team on their state championship, third in a row. Played a great game the whole season. They've just really done a great job. And to Carlos Sorani for being named Coach of the Year, who is the girls' coach. I also just want to give a shout out to the boys' team and Ali Sorani, who was named Coach of the Year. So just has done a great job with both teams this year. Joe and I did many trips to Berry this year, so we were, we were one win away from the finals for the boys, so. But on the flip side, because you know me, I'm also, as much as I'm about athletics, I'm also about the academics. We're quickly in the season of testing, cognia tests. All of our schools have been working on that, also called the VIT cap. We got a jump because West Rutland has all the grades. We need to be able to, it takes a while to get through all those grades that need to be tested, starting in the third grade. So that has been going on. We started this week and working out the foibles, because it's all done online, if you're not familiar with that. And there's always tech upgrades and updates that get pushed out. There's always going to be, our tech department has been great about troubleshooting simple things that have popped up. We also had some great stuff. It was actually, two of them were just today. STEM, which stands for science, technology, engineering, and math. We had what were called rat trap braces, which were like homemade wind-up with rubber band and, see, they're pretty cool. I have pictures that I can show next time. We'll get them posted online. And also trebuchets. Our eighth graders have made homemade trebuchets, which are like catapults, but a little bit different. And they were launching tennis balls. And it was really cool to watch the engineering that goes into this, to actually make it work. So we've just totally revamped our STEM offerings at West Rutland over the course of the last year. And I just wanted to point out, you know, Chris just mentioned about the building, physical plant studies that are going to be coming, getting back from being revised. We did have, and I have a picture of it on page two in my report, the 1970s-era breaker board, which services the Hinchy Gym, is 50 years old. The breakers that are in there are no longer, this company, Federal Pacific, is no longer even a company that's in, in operation anymore, so we can't get the breakers. The breakers that we ended up having to buy were rebuilt. Didn't even know that was a thing. I'm learning a lot. And I took, put a couple pictures in there just so you could see it. Our electrician, Matt Corey, suggested that we look, and he is not interested in it, looking at replacing that, because eventually we will not be able to even get the rebuilt breakers. It's just yet another thing. I mean, it might have not even popped up. I don't remember it popping up in our physical plant study. I think I would have made note of that. But this is something that we do need to keep an eye on. I gave you the pictures. If we can get away with just rebuilding the actual panel box, it will save us a lot of money. But if they have to go in, replace the panel box, it's a big ticket item, so upwards of 30, 35,000 for that panel box. So along with this picture does it justice, this massive arm, instead of a lever to turn the power off. It's got like this arm thing that I included. It's just very old, very archaic. It's 50 years old. You know, at least it's not knob and tube, but it's, it's pretty old stuff. So just something to keep, right now, we're working, we're doing okay. We're going to try, our electrician's going to try to get one more rebuilt. Right now, we have none. One more rebuilt breaker in case, I like to have something for a rainy day. And to put that to a dollar figure, a rebuilt breaker is about $1,200. So this is not a cheap thing to begin with. So I think people just need to be aware, if you've ever redone a panel box in your own home, it is not a cheap endeavor. And we're talking about something that powers half of our building. So this is, this is something that we're going to keep. And probably one of my favorite things of the year, next week, 5:30 on the 20th, Night of the Shining Stars. It is a celebration of all student work at West Rutland. We will have 1,000 people coming through. The PTO, the new revamped West Rutland PTO is going to be there with all sorts of stuff, including a silent auction. And we will have this classic book fair going on at the same time. It is just a great, great time. I know Superintendent Sow was able to stop over last week with, or last year with his busy schedule. It's just a really great time.
When is it?
Next Wednesday at 5:30. Come early, or you will not have a parking spot, Linda. So, and just one last thing, the annual closet tournament's going on right now, literally as we speak. Jesse has come in and out, who's been helping us run the, run the clock. Just a wonderful boosters event that happens each year. This year, I think they have 24 teams that were participating. So lots happening at, at West Rutland School.
Great, thank you.
Oh, any questions?
And what time does it start?
5:30.
5:30, okay.
Okay.
Thanks, Jay.
Yep.
Moving on, Jennifer, do you want to go?
I'm actually at the closet tournament.
Oh!
Which I would say is an amazing event.
Who's winning?
It is Rutland Town 27, Middlebury 28. It is another nail biter at the closet. So what an amazing event that West Rutland puts on for the community. So I'm going to mute myself again, but a lot of information can be found in my report on Proctor and all the great things going on there.
You make a, you make a great reporter. Thank you.
I just, she said she muted herself. That's like a first.
You can hear that.
Yeah, she can hear that. She'll deal with that tomorrow.
Actually, I couldn't hear that.
She wanted to read to you.
I said you could mute yourself. That's a first, when you said I'll mute myself, so.
Oh, boy.
Well, Joe.
Good evening, everybody. Yeah, but you can read most things in my report. Just a few things I want to, our student council has really been doing, they're really growing a lot this year. Actually, today, they wanted to, they bought ice cream and were serving ice cream sundaes in the cafeteria for all the students, just because, there was no reason. They just thought it would be a kind of a cool thing to do. We tried to find a, figured no school tomorrow, good time to do it today. They actually would like to come to the board next month and just do a quick little presentation. I told them this was probably not a good month to do it with all the restructuring and all that kind of stuff. So hopefully, they'll be coming up next month. And again, just a quick little presentation. I said, just a few members? And they're like, no, we all want to come. I was like, okay, come on, talk to Chris about that. We have actually, Melissa Christiansen, our art teacher, we have artwork all over the place. There's three shows just in the state of Vermont right now, and we actually have artwork down in Washington DC with Becca Ballant down in her office and stuff like that. But I believe it's, I don't know if it's on our website yet, but she did this quick little video on Monday morning meeting showing all the work and the students that are, you know, we're at the Chaffey, we're in Southern Vermont. I forget the other one that we're at. Oh, we're at the Fairhaven Welcome Center. So she, she does an amazing job getting our art out there. So just, you know, kudos to her. And we, we got some talented kids in our, she was putting up art, I think at the Southern Vermont Show, she was saying there was another school, they all, Polley did photos, and she goes, these aren't photos. And the kids were like, oh. So they're really, they are really talented, and we're blessed to have her. Our kids were throwing paper airplanes from our STEM class today, so, you know, they sit there and say, that's great, because they'll be flying around. But yeah, our kids were doing paper airplanes. Our chemistry and biology class, just, you know, we, we could not find a substitute for Caitlin Groat, so we're, we're doing an online thing this year where this company that Chris found for us, that there's a live teacher on the screen, and it's been, I've been popping in there. And actually, like the chemistry class on Tuesday was, you know, playing with the Bunsen burners and the fire. And Joe Trout's been great. She's been coming in, our other science teacher, helping out. We have Terry Sadie, our, one of our library IAs, coming in and just, she's our classroom coach, they call it. So, but it's kind of cool, you know, just, they can still do their experiments, so it's online, but it's also hands-on as well. And then just the last thing, I have some out-of-state trips. The first one, on April 13th, our Model Congress. They used to go to Springfield, Mass, and Springfield stopped doing it. I believe it's Westfield College. I'm not sure the exact what it is in Massachusetts. That's on Saturday, April 13th. It's not an overnight, they're just down and back that day. June 12th, the whole school, the staff, we talked about it, we used to do school-wide trips, and they wanted to do a school-wide trip. They'd like to go to Springfield, Mass, to the Six Flags New England, just kind of a celebration at the end of the year for all our students. So we'd like to do that. And this one, I thought we had gone through already, but I don't know, next April, April 2025, our Spanish Club, would like to go, they're putting together a trip to Puerto Rico. They've been doing some fundraising. And again, that's April 2025. And Aaron Welch, our, our Spanish teacher, said she would be more than happy to come in and talk to the board, too, if there's more questions on that. I know we discussed it, I thought it was like November or December, but I don't know if it was officially approved or not, so.
Okay.
Those are three out-of-state trips, though.
Okay.
Looking for approval? We're a motion for-
Approval for those three trips, yes, please.
Do you want, do you want the teacher to come in and do a presentation?
And it is through one of those travel, school, travel things. It's not just, they're just, not just going down, it's all-
So the teacher would have time to come in and-
Yep. She's, I taught, yep, she's volunteered, she'll say she'll come in next-
Oh, great.
-month as well.
Okay.
So do you want to wait for the approval? Anybody? Or do you want to approve it?
Is the, is planning able to continue forward?
Yeah, they've been doing some-
With the delay if they were to come?
Yeah, they had to get it in, that's why we brought it to the board. I can't remember if it was November or December, because they were doing the informational meeting, and like, they had to, if you're going to do it, we got to start, because it, even though it's-
And their fundraising, is this, they're fundraising rights, so they each-
Yeah, they're doing a little fundraising.
Yeah, my niece is doing one of these to Costa Rica with a similar-
Yeah, so it'll be over April break of next year.
Well, I'll make a motion for the April 13th and June 12th. And also, if it's all right, the April 2025 to Puerto Rico, with the teacher coming in at some point.
I'll talk to her tomorrow and tell her.
Okay. What was the?
April 13th was Model Congress.
Okay. A motion's been made by Linda that, we're tabling this until next meeting?
No, I'm making the motion that let's do it, to give them permission as long as the teacher comes in and does a presentation.
To present, okay.
Is that okay with the board?
So I just have a question. Like, why did they, do you know why they chose Puerto Rico? Or is it just?
Uh, just, I think, I don't know if that's where the company or whatever went to, or I don't know if Aaron's, I'll be honest with you, I don't know if Aaron's been there before or not. It's just someplace Spanish speaking, so.
So a motion's been made to have students and the teacher come in to our meetings to present a trip on April 13th to Model Congress at Waitsfield, Mass. And June 12th-
Springfield, Mass.
Springfield, Mass.
That's the school trip.
School trip.
Yep.
And April, Spanish Club, going to Puerto Rico. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So moved.
Thank you. Liz is on, too.
Liz is there, too? Liz, would you like to give your report?
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yep. We can hear you.
Very wonderful. So, yes, yes, I can. I have everything included in my report, but I just wanted to highlight that this time of year in an elementary school is super special. Been making my way into classrooms and was able to witness a play that the first graders were putting on, where they were reading some pretty high-level text in order to follow directions and present this play on the Little Yellow Chicken, which was a spin-off of Little Red Hen. So it was super fun to watch them do that. And then I was actually challenged when I went into a sixth-grade math class, because they were working on algebra, and I had to go back to my office and kind of look up some of what they were doing, so that I could come in and next time, sit down and actually work side by side with them. So a lot of energy in the building at this time, a lot of excitement. Kids are now making those connections we've worked so hard on all year, and they're starting to see their own growth, which is exciting. And just looking forward to sharing that with parents at parent-teacher conference in the next couple of weeks. And we were able to bring parents in back at the end of February for a mid-year celebration, so trying to really promote what's been going on within the school. And, you know, getting outside now that it's nice out again, so high energy. I would encourage anybody to stop by and visit and to see the wonderful things that's going on. So, any questions about my report?
It was great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is Ms. Calgeri on?
No.
No? No? Okay, so we're moving on. Finance.
Yes, so there was a report in the package that had a forecast for the, this current school year. So what I do is I just look at our current expenses, or our current budget versus our actuals, and anticipate where I think we're going to end the year. At this time, there was a summary sheet that kind of explains what the forecast surplus is, and some of the, highlights some of the major variances. So currently, we're estimating a surplus of approximately $278,000. There are still a lot of variables. We have about four months left in the school year. I don't anticipate that surplus going down, but as I mentioned in my report, there's about $300,000 in unspent lines, so that as we get closer to the end of the full year and schools don't fully utilize those lines, that will add to the surplus amount. If there's any questions tonight, I'll take them, otherwise, as you're reviewing the report, if you have any questions, feel free to email me.
Any questions? Any questions?
When do you want to start working on next year's budget?
Out to the fall. Give me a little bit of a break.
Any other questions? Thank you, Louis.
Right, have a good night.
Personnel. Contract recommendations.
Eric, I would recommend that you just have a motion to accept contracts as presented. This is the, all the union positions, as per the CBA, we have to notify individuals by April 1st as to whether or not they'll be offered a contract, so that's why you'll see this large list. But then, what we can do is, we can have Christine and Shawna add this list as an addendum to the minutes. So, this will be part of public record, but as opposed to going through all these names.
Okay.
The board's okay with it.
Would someone like to make a motion?
I will make a motion to accept contract recommendations.
Motion has been made by Linda to accept contract negotiation recommendations. Discussion.
My discussion would be that I think we have to be very careful about talking to the Rutland Herald before contracts are approved here. I think it's embarrassing for this board when it appears that we have hired people that this board is not even aware of.
Pertaining to?
Pertaining to the board.
To the new coach, okay.
I have discussed that with, with Chris, I did column. And we spoke about maybe changing policies, bringing it before the board, to see if, I think it would be good to have maybe a board member from, from each town beyond the hiring committee, so that everybody's.
I don't think that changes the discussion.
So, Eric, I think the discussion that we had, and I spoke with Joe, was just more along the lines of the processes, as with, and the principals understand this, that with every hire, we explain to them that it's not official until it comes before the board. So, so I think what, what happened was, in this particular case, the newspaper, the reporter had, was doing another story, but then had run this, this story about, you know, the person he had appointed, the football coach, which technically was not true, because that, that appointment's not official until it comes before the board.
Okay.
And we have had situations in the past where we have brought coaches and then we've had some, some discussions about why don't we want to proceed with them. We've had teachers who have been, staff have been brought before, recommendation, but then the board has decided not to move forward with that recommendation, so.
I agree with that.
So, that's, that's, that's just a procedure that we just revisited with, you know, and Joe and I talked about this. It was a unique situation around an article that ran and so, but we also just reminded the reporter that, I think that's just what the concern was, just for public record, that positions aren't official till the board formally approves them. Regardless of what has been said, that's, the board formally, you know, approves. I, all I do is make a recommendation to the board and the board approves that, and then that's when it becomes official. So, that story, as nice as it was, really should have been run tomorrow after, you know, the board has approved it. So, that's just.
It was the interview committee's recommendation.
Correct. Right.
Officially.
Okay. So, we don't need to, in further, and I understand that and I agree with what you're saying, Lisa. I'm just saying, how are we going to rectify this in the future?
It's just, it's just.
Do we need to have?
It's just a process and, and, you know, Joe and I spoke and I think, you know, and Joe spoke with Dave about this, just understand the process. And we, and Jay and I think, you know, Liz and Joe, no, we say this all the time to candidates, we are recommending this to the board, this is not official until the board formally approves it. And we will call you or notify you after the board meeting to let you know if you have been formally approved. Because, like I said, the board has the final say on these appointments. And I think that's just what it would just.
Okay, so, so we don't need any new policies, is what you're saying?
No, no, I think it's just, but I think what, in this particular situation would be.
Follow the policy.
Follow the policies, what needs to happen.
Follow the procedure, right.
Yeah, just, and I think that's just where.
All right, good.
Yeah.
Good.
Any further discussion?
You made the motion?
I did.
A motion's been made to accept the contracts as, as written? As written? As presented? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Eric, we do have four resignations and we have one non-renewal to come for the board.
Need a motion to accept as, as presented, the resignations. We don't need to read their names, obviously.
You could read their names if you'd want to, though. So, because, you don't.
You don't need to.
Okay. Do we have a, a motion?
Make a motion to accept the resignations and not removal, non-renewals.
A motion has been made to accept the resignation of the non-renewals. Does anybody have any discussion?
I think we should do them separately. I don't think they should be, they should be commingled.
I'll make a motion to accept the resignations.
A motion's been made to accept the resignations.
You have a motion on the table on the floor already.
Right.
So, you need to act on that motion or have it rescinded.
I'll rescind my motion, thank you, Mike.
Motion has been rescinded.
I'll make a motion now to accept the resignations.
Motion has been made to accept the resignations. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Can't have the non-renewal. We have to do the non-renewal.
We have to do the, okay.
I'll make a motion to accept the non-renewal.
A motion has been made by Linda to accept the non-renewals. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Item 10, Policies. A, E9, Animals on School Grounds, second read. Is there a motion to accept?
You want to, I'll make a motion to accept second read for animals on school grounds.
A motion has been made to accept E9, Animals on School Grounds, second reading. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. B, E14, Fiscal Management and General Financial Accountability, second read.
I'll make the motion to approve.
A motion has been made to approve E14, Fiscal Management and General Financial Accountability. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. C, E15, Capitalization of Assets, second read.
I'll make the motion.
Motion has been made to accept E15, Capitalization of Assets. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. D, H5, Title I, Part A, Parent and Family Engagement, second read. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
A motion, a motion has been made to accept H5, Title I, Part A, Parent and Family Engagement, second read. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. 11, General Public Comments. Is there anybody here? No? Okay, moving on. Future meeting dates. A, April 11th, 2024. Is there a motion?
No, we don't need to.
You don't need a motion, they're just done, okay. 13, Future Agenda Items.
So, Eric, typically, if people have agenda items, they can reach out to you or reach out to myself to add them or can just, so.
Okay. So, I don't need to repeat you there, do I?
No, but, well.
Okay. I mean, yeah, if you have, have future agenda items, please reach out to me to get them on the agenda or Chris. Item 14, Executive Session. Is there a motion to?
There's no executive.
No executive? So, these, okay. And item 15, Adjournment.
I'll make the motion.
A motion has been made to adjourn. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.